I just spoke for the outreach.
I have no further report tonight. Mr. Anthony, anything from the school board?
They had a work session. It was this past Tuesday. There was another audit activity. They did change it to mass optional that's stored. And last evening, they changed for the buses. That was what commented before that it's mass optional. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'd like to report on the website project. We have several documents in front of you. The first one looks at the two incidents because we can't control this website project. And the overview is that this advisory group was putting together, which was myself, President Miller, Jenna Ratauski, Renowski, and Manager Sazowski. We met several times in the last few weeks. And our task was to develop an action plan for significantly improving both look and operation and services and business of websites who've been there everywhere in the last six months. And more recently, you've noticed that it's just not working well and it doesn't look well. And so, we have an incentive to correct that. So, we just asked with several steps. You can read what they were in our project plan. I won't go over all of them. If you have questions about any of them, please let me know. The primary task was to find potential vendors. And we did. We initially sought out three. One of them, Benedict, did not even get out of the gate. They stumbled. And we just felt like that was not a good plan to move forward with them. So, we had to focus, and then before you consider plus and revise. Revised has a very robust plan. Almost a Mac address. But they both did a good job. Jenna Renowski did a great job. She was awesome and has been very valuable on this team. And she put together the cost comparison from a 10-year and a five-year comparison for Civic Plus and Revised, which is our two remaining candidates. And in essence, we decided that Revised would be the recommended company to move forward with. So, that's our recommendation. But any questions up until this?
Roger, could you pull up some of the revised examples? Is that possible?
Yeah, they've done mobile work and I guess that's what we're pulling up now.
Did Revised do Carol Valley? Did it do Carol Valley?
Revised, that was Civic Plus.
That's Civic Plus.
Okay.
Actually, we did Camp Hills, which is up on the screen right now. Revised's website or their design for Camp Hill Borough.
Is this a template? Are they using templates while they're building this up?
I don't know if they're using templates or not. But if your question is if they customize it, yes, very much so. Because one of the things you'll notice, we have forms listed. And depending on the overall cost, we already have a form system that we're using and are required to use a system. But we have to decide if we're going to ultimately integrate to a more web-friendly approach with however we move forward. We have options to consider there.
I think what we're asking, I think what the group is asking the committee tonight is, give us a direction on which one of these two you want us to go with. And over the next two weeks, we will work with that group to then give you a formal proposal after the next meeting.
It would be helpful, maybe, to get a couple of examples from each company for us to look at outside of the meeting. It's a lot to take in in one sentence.
I took them earlier today.
Today?
Yeah.
Okay, and we see it today, I'm sorry.
And Silver Spring Township went with the other company, Civic. So, there's, I mean, they're very similar, but there are some differences with the way they have the layout.
Can we still see Silver Spring Township?
It's in here.
So, what do you think was the reason that Revised did better, in your mind, than Civic Plus? I think from what we discussed was price seemed to be a factor because they were fairly competitive in all the other areas that we saw. But I think with the options that we could plug in later was another thing for me personally as we needed them.
The initial thing with Revised was after five years, year five, you get a free design, free refresh of the site.
Yeah.
So, that was the most bonus with them. Because we all know, we've had the Revised since now, the website every four years.
Do Civic Plus, how do they respond when you ask the question why they're significantly more expensive?
I don't know when we ask that question.
I'd be curious to know what their response would be if that company, if we did find...
They don't appear to be significantly more expensive.
Yeah, not to me.
They're built at the same price, just paid differently.
So, if you look at a five-year comparison, so roughly comparable in terms of...
In five years, but not ten.
In five, but not ten. Jenna did ten years look at it for a long-term view, but that's not necessarily what the proposals themselves spelled out.
I see.
So, it was just for our knowledge comparison as to what a long-term relationship with one of, with one or the other providers with cost to drive.
So, also notice that Revised has web plus forms, but Civic Plus did not have even...
Civic Plus also has plugins, but they're additional to that cost as well.
I don't think they broke that down.
They didn't break it down.
So, Revised for the forms, would that be like fillable on the website and submitables to council on the website or to the borough office on the website? They only submit something out and mail it over?
It would be like a, it goes far as a building permit. Or it gets rather detailed. And we, I believe the committee thought, first, that we didn't need to go that route, but if we wanted to tackle that later on, that we could add that option. It wasn't something we felt that we should tackle immediately because there's so many other things we have to do initially to get the site up and running.
And that was a lot of staff work as well to convert those forms to make them work on the platform.
Okay.
At least that's what we believe.
But there's not...
And not all forms can be fillable online, correct? Like, some of them have to be printed?
There's a few of them that have legal signatures, yes.
So, we don't know whether the both staff will be required to do that conversion or whether Revised will be left for us?
There's a certain number of pages, there's a certain number of pages and content that's included in both proposals. So, what we would have to do, the committee, the website advisory group, in consultation with staff, is to still that down and try to work into that framework so it doesn't toss us extra money because those charge us extra for extra content to be uploaded.
I think the Revised backend was a little easier. It seemed a little more strict user intuitive. It filled in a lot of the things, like when you're posting a picture up or something like that, it sizes it automatically. Civic Plus, you had to adjust it and you didn't play with it. And one of the other things was the mobile content on, I think Revised looks a little better on the mobile side than what Civic Plus does. Civic Plus gets a little clunky, even clumpy. I think my opinion is a little clunkier than our website is right now on the global side. Now, we...
I mean, back in, what, 2016, 2017? We, I think we took, the committee at that time, took a Civic Plus website and tried to copy it and make our Borough website, but we didn't go with Civic Plus. And that's how, when the gentleman's name came up who presented to us that Civic Plus was already familiar with Mechanicsburg because Mechanicsburg had contacted him years ago.
He's, he's been contacting me on the long since, the beginning. And yeah, he talked to me like he was a lost color or something.
Roger, would you pull Carlisle?
Well, I'm doing that, Roger. How do the citizens currently get the lines from the borough?
Either get them off the line or they come into, actually come into the Borough Office and get them.
They download a PDF?
Yeah. It's that easy to navigate.
Exactly.
No, I know what a curbside is, but if we went without the forms component, would we still have a PDF library?
There is a system, Roger. Yeah, we'd have to do a system. We'd have to set up something to do that. Their system, I'm not sure. Forms management system, the MARS. I built the acrobat. I have, I've got most of ours converted over to fillable forms. And we've just been kind of reluctant to put them out on the website because the, because of the fact that we could crash our website and then not have one. So, we're doing everything we can to limp ours along, Band-Aids, constant Band-Aids on the website to make sure it stays up and running.
So, as you know, with this new system, would you personally be the one converting these forms to PDF?
If they couldn't use the ones that are already converted, yeah, somebody would. I don't know who would.
Somebody that Roger would delegate.
I think, yeah, I was going to say, right, or we outsource it.
This is Carlisle. Who's Carlisle with? Where was your box?
Just, yeah, I've never been in the package as well.
Yeah. Using them as an example.
They're a bit stronger format.
To me, it flows better and it's better integration.
You know, I kind of like it much to the streets. You know, we need something that's visible and that's functional. Because if we spend $2,000 left and it doesn't make a splash, it's not worth it. I'm not suggesting that we do the forms, but whatever we need to do to make the site functional, and it'll take straight off of the office staff as well because the website will be, they're a bit more self-sufficient.
Right, I think we could look, we'll have to discuss that. We could look at what, how much work that would be initially.
Sure.
And what, you know, if we don't decide to do that this year, we could work in DQ of the proposal.
I know it's a big project. I appreciate the committee taking the time to do it. It's not a small task, but it could make, it's a little cool humor. We can make a big splash in a positive way, so.
Those are the only things we considered because our website now is very utilitarian looking. And when you, and people check us out on the website. That's just what it is today. And if it can look appealing, it's a place to start for a lot of people.
Yeah, I think that the functional part is of particular interest to me.
Yeah.
So, it makes it easier to set it up.
Let's do it. This computer can't get into the back end of this, so I can't mess this up. So, just by looking at it here. But... Well, the story behind that, that...
There is a huge story.
It's not just something black that there was something that happened with one of our vendors that, and it wasn't perfect, this is a casualty. So, we can...
By the way, Solicitor Cassidy, we're still getting bills from him. We're going to have to send another nasty gram.
Okay.
So, I think it might be care of Cumberland County prison, but...
Give you a senior address.
Right now, our documents, you guys asked about documents. It would be basically the same as what we're doing with the agendas and minutes. At this point in time, is, you know, using our Ecode 360 system. Because we can put that stuff in here. If I'm logged in into this system, there's a whole litany of things under public documents that we can use. And this is included in our price for the Ecode 360. This is where we maintain our code ordinance and everything like that. Like, the bar manager's ordinance that was adopted at last meeting, we'll change that. We'll send that to them. They'll automatically update it on the website for us.
And is this deployed still functional and it'd be...
Yeah, this isn't associated with our website. This is an outside source to our website.
So, still is the recommendation of the committee to continue to render?
Well, I don't know if we specifically arrived at a decision on our recommendation, but we know that this is necessary for our legal requirements. Whether we can integrate or use it separately or have a better link to it, that's, I think, that's something we still have to attend to.
Are we just now using that system?
Yes.
So, it should be, it should be great then.
Yeah. Carlisle uses this. Chambersburg, Silver Springs, Hampton Township, they all use this as their warehouse for their codified ordinance.
But could you go to Carlisle? Go to the government? You don't have to click on it. Just through our council. Where are the agendas and minutes? Now, stop page. Agenda's in there. I need a better segment. This is also an option because it would be helpful to have the link to the agenda and then a video following the changes.
So, what do you think of us?
So, I think we're looking for, I think the group is looking for a green light to, for us to go ahead with the recommendation and bring you something to the next meeting to decide on. You can look at the designs and stuff in the intro and provide feedback.
To be honest, I think I'm satisfied. I think the committee moves forward with all of these. And thank you, committee.
Headnote, let's see your face.
I'm just going to say, I mean, I appreciate the work that you guys did to these vendors, to these vendors. And yeah, and again, I'm not going to feel any sort of... Appreciate you guys inviting me to the conference, but I'd like to keep going.
Moving on to community and economic development.
Yes, thank you very much, President Roger. Good meeting. We actually have something to do today, so that was wonderful. I'd like to invite for back to yours, if you want to.
Certainly, thank you. I've never been off. I worked just... Today, we were given a copy of my report. I apologize for the backside being upside down, having a lot of IT issues. And apparently, one of them went to print. So, it starts having a new look. We are now B F ten or a dark one for the storefront. And the owner of the building, which is mom of Glitz, Alicia's mother, is going to be doing a project for the upper floors, painting at least a trim. We're going to be talking, that would be about base grant. Alicia used the grant to paint the lower section. The project we have for the building that includes Chef de Crete, some castings, Main Street Laundry, and a couple other businesses and apartments. That grant was approved a couple of years ago. They have a little bit of wood repair and trim work to do before we can paint, but that will happen this spring to early summer. That's for the city's business property. My family's family bakery is open, Ray reviews. They're at 612 East Simpson. They're at the other end of the building with Pizza Hut. And the Gingerbread Man TLCB hearing is next week. That's for their economic development lip relations. I'm providing testimony. And my understanding is that there's some others here who may be as well. There are two hearings scheduled for Cumberland County next month. If they're both issued, that would take us into 2023 for any new applications. There are two issues each year. So, that's good that we got on that right away. I'm going to be convening a group of neighbors of the Gingerbread Man, a property owners and businesses to talk about conditions along that stretch when the Gingerbread Man opens. Some of this is historical and some of this is futuristic in that we want to clean up those buildings. We did a project at Debbie Wagner Eckstein's property a couple of years ago. They do a cosmetology studio. We're Revolution Spa now. There's some condition issues there already. We want to, they put in a bed, they won't get better on, you know, left to their own devices. This is their property will be, we've got, not got a concern about the safety issues along there. And Roger, excuse me, it's just your speech. As part of that project, I will be addressing the white posts in the parking lot. That's a good topic to write in as a concern there. The Davis Country Living Building across the street from the Borough Building that will go under contract in the next couple of weeks with settlements expected in May. That is for an area organization that would be purchasing that to expand their services. Corey Leister has inspired by you. That's in the building where Battery Warehouse may go someday. The gentleman who owns that building started in December of 2016 and still hasn't moved his business from St. Zadoro to that location. All the economists would use that to do so. She needs more space. She rents two of the three units. She would love to buy the building, so we're going to start that conversation again. But if not, she would like to stay in the Borough. So, the people could continue to work with them. We have monies targeted from the Borough, Cumberland County, and Members' First River, million-dollar project. I met a couple of weeks ago with a grant organization to see about a product development grant program when that program opens. That's expected to open in May. We looked at two new properties. Both are promising. One is lip relations, one that is not. Telly's Corner, that's where Zidder Outleys and Happy Birds is located. That is for sale. Had a couple two folks go through that. And the former bag processors property, Lundy's, at the corner of North York and West Adams Street is abandoned for sale. Talked to that realtor, that price needs to come down considerably. The redevelopment's going to have a nature in that particular one. And we'll be glad to share this. Pickleball. We're one of the best pickleball facilities in central Pennsylvania, according to the pictures. There's some pin lines. And if anyone's inspired, I think we ought to work toward this. There are pickleball open in tournaments all over the US, closest to living in Philadelphia. I was 25th and 28th. I don't know if that's enough time to get ready. I have in my report that the community development block for 2022 is going to open. Information was sent yesterday. That's not true, but it's imminent. It will be sometime this week. That's in my office. And I've got assistant organizations who apply for the, who are applying for Pennsylvania local share grants. This is the program that comes out of the gaming and horse racing funds that I mentioned a few months ago, and they were able to put it together and get it out on the street there pretty quickly. That's what I have. Anything to me? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Happy March.
Thanks for being here. And besides that, totally important. Funny, you mentioned, we have nothing. If this meeting report will help me, I have it our first meeting, apparently. In the near future, fine. Congratulations.
Yes, so we met last month and we are going to need again this month to look at the application process for HARV and to provide some feedback and to include some transitions between the office and HARV's expectations for application. So, I think it was a very positive meeting. I look forward to this next meeting and looking for the application process.
Thank you. Anything for council and Agger's on HARV? Nothing? Then we'll move around the DMP cycle and Agger again.
Yes, so unfortunately, I was ill for the last meeting, but I do know that the West Main Building, First West Main will be coming down March 26th at 9:00 a.m. So, we hope that everyone comes and celebrates the beautification of our square. And then we also will be looking forward to Earth Day, April 16th. So, it's always a really fun event for everyone to come out to. And that is my report.
Thank you so much. I think it was comprehension plan. Do we mark down? Welcome.
Trying to find a car.
Okay.
Just hanging up behind you, Johnny.
Oh, yeah.
Go to the doctor, I can take it and wipe it off.
You can use that. Hit the X up there. Microsoft is over.
Thank you for having me this evening. I am Carol Mayfield, the environmental planning and design. And seeking information that we had an opportunity to look at last year. Actually, we put together some specifics in front of you and outlined some considerations for you all and the various committees that would all be sort of portion of the policy, potential policy update. Actually, I think with the White Legion of the Journey Ordinance Amendment that was on the scene, and then there are some other kinds of things related to the parks recreation agreement that are happening. But we already talked things about it, but it's a matter of, in this also umbrella of planning, so we see some opportunities to make sure they're coming together at different points in time, incorrectly. So, what we've done, we've taken each of the items that you all have prioritized as high, medium, and low. There is the colorful column here where we just kept those medium and high designations. Some of them didn't necessarily have a priority specific, and some of them also are completed. So, a little bit of room to go and come to your point. So, in total, we want to go through looking at elements of future lending. There are transportation, transit, and infrastructure. There are, as well, and civic and natural amenities. We have the regional relationships. And then other impacts in town. So, what we've considered is that over, potentially, this quarter two, putting together a series of outline options for you all of the boroughs to consider what we have seen in our work across the different municipalities to bring it, or the way in which some of the municipalities get access to these topics. You, Jenna, I don't know, so we're working to figure out the implications. So, it would be like that type of sub-choices, meaning that do not curtail it specifically related to talking of objects to the back, to the awareness. So, I thought for the purpose of our discussion this evening that this is actually probably one of the more key items. Let me check later, it's colorful. Try to evaluate the interns from the different groups that are out of jail and looking at the company's compliance requirements. There are a wide array of responsibilities and coordination within most different groups. Parking commission and wellness committee have actually twelve related items of action that we will have the opportunity to evaluate together. Public works has three specifics. Public safety has two. Parks and Recreation have eight. The, I'm sorry, CEO, municipal and community outreach is three. The community and economic development is four. The voting office is thirteen. The engineers can, and the laborers, although that amongst multiple committees, there are at least four, at least half, to do that type of thing. So, why would we be talking about the comprehensive facilities? I jumped way too far, way too... I jumped way too far, way too fast. Back up just a second. To say that all of the kinds of topics of budget, transportation, infrastructure, the kinds of things that you have on this week to outline for the capital improvement and then for the saving, the thing, the civic side, the policy side, and then just your ultimate coordination side. All will be coming together as part of essentially this living as an update to this document. And so I think it would be a consideration in evaluating what you considered as some of these high priority items. Getting those outlines to you as quickly as possible, and even the medium ones, because now medium, median priority, you're not aware that it would take in order to get that task done could be a little more lengthy process. So it still needs to, it would be advantageous, excuse me. So it could be something that you start thinking about sooner rather than later. So just because it's a high priority doesn't mean it has to be done actually precisely first or prior to a median priority, because it's essential that investment of time that it could take to develop. The one thing related with the planning commission that where you saw some overlap with the zoning officer or the ordinance committee, that is probably that the thickest part of this development. And we would like to, as I think, consider that, we haven't seen some interest as it relates to the element of character and some other things that relates to either design standards and how you can get at that in a more specific way in some of the other districts that aren't currently designated as T N D and the traditional neighborhood development, right? Because some of the planning tools, I went too fast. Some of the planning tools, from the M P C side of the U C, so like we talked about, the planning commission we've talked about over time, is that there are some ways in which to get those design standards if it were actually incorporated into J V, whereas if it were incorporated into subdivision and land development. And the kinds of mechanisms that you would seek to have. I think one of the early ones is the talking strategy. And while that is a part of the subdivision and land development, right, of the general ordinance. Because you, as a proactive side of bodies with planning commission and yourself, would be able to consider those kinds of things that impact the benefits of where the demand is at and even having someone walk through the application process. There could be some different ways to approach that by incorporating such a shift to where you are located in what areas and section. And in general, actually, just some of the reference that the tools that the municipality planning could allows you to take advantage, because they are tools that you want to use when in some cases, maybe there is more opportunities with borough to use than we're presently. Though we already are, so it would be lacking. How much later reference within the major policy document? So I'm trying not to get too far too fast into some of your other infrastructure types of relevant questions, but when it comes to some of the sidewalk strategy and considerations that you're also outlining as part of the side path insofar as with English sequencing. And like if we have that fifteen year reference of paving, what that means for the sidewalks that go along with it and sure, all of the different G I S figures that you continuously running with. How about using the late two minutes of the planting there and by not just nature from writing the other committees and that sort of specific space? So we do see that if it were of interest in quarter two, where Roger and I could put together a very specific strategy, meaning March April and May, and sort of the very specific agendas associated with each of these types of discussions, that that is something that I would use as a guidebook to work through each of these kinds of things. So it's one thing to say, yes, we want to adjust, I'm making a number up, thirteen areas, right, of primary provisions that we're going to adapt to here. We need to potentially consider the adapter of provisions from this article, whether it's from other conditions that we may want to find, we can talk about this evening, and the realities of those pieces. And those types of discussions that you are part of planning commission will be having a really gritty, what does the actual criteria say? But the documents that I was referencing is essentially this quarter two guidebook where the being what could be the thing that takes you through, okay, have we gotten at the first draft of this criteria? Or do we want to try to get to the second draft to the going from the planning commission to the community? No, all of those kinds of things. So the games have essentially a playbill coming up to the end of the year. Where we see that is possible, the end of the year, declarations of public hearings. Will be something we can share. So I'll throw it to you. We have a thread both the same way, and you're talking about the Park Recreation component. And probably a number of actions that you've outlined as part of this. Would be actually, we're currently working with a township community in this region that the Park Recreation, the Recreation Board is actually utilizing 2022. They have not updated their park recreations from 2004. And they put everybody out a couple of years ago, just for general questions. I don't know many of the last survey may have gone out about Park Recreation.
For ours?
Yeah. Probably go. Okay. So is 2022 actually was something where you wanted to look at actually from a set surveying process and developing that with a resident wide sort of inquiry? Because the reference to pickleball is, you know, hitting out of parks kind of thing. And there are some other types of things happening in Park Recreation within this county and within this region where if you have the opportunity to either team up with someone, so that you're not overlapping services. And then in the public space, we should use those kinds of areas of names either in the refresh or if it's something that you're not in competition, right, with some of the rules before. Or if you have the understanding that some of your borough that you specifically want to do things with Park Recreation here in the municipality, but over the course of time, what if that has happened or has happened? They travel outside of there, or other type of activities. And having all this C N D, what people are doing, what households are doing, what households have an interest in potential doing what they want. And what, based sort of the tolerance for the consideration of investment in Park Recreation. In terms of, I don't know municipality as an example. They took on updating between August and actually the end of March coming next Sunday. They had taken on the update of six master plan, pipe plan update. And they did those six plan updates actually based on the two full surveying because of the kinds of questions that they asked from the referencing, they knew what we found you. Are there any sort of kind of questions that you all could consider, your committee could consider? So that you could go through and say, do you want to ask our residents this type of thing? And with the value of those kinds of questions, kind of what do we seek to do? Because as part of that comprehensive park and recreational and these, right now, and with this cleanways update where you're considering some of the things that definitely changed the habits of what you have done with our lives. And having you figure out a post to that, where if you think you're, you're one of the borough and the whole should strategize where you want to put your investments. Because there are several sets of investments that you had a commitment that needs to happen from a hardcore infrastructure side and being able to balance that with the civic side and some area of the remedy is definitely, I think, in the next couple of years, where there's discussions among the residents, we would be, one of the decisions. That is what we need to be considering over the next couple of weeks and appreciate, well, February or still, so appreciate being able, being with you this evening. That's the high level update of what's happening. And is there anything with any question or something that you said that some of these have to a particular area of interest, a larger scale planning? Or did I go too quick too far?
No, I think he did very well. And thank you. If any of the council have questions or included any comments? No?
Yes. One of the things I could show before. And this is what we see. Let me reach it. Hold on there. And to have this, so we can look.
I'll list these out to everybody tomorrow. And then as soon as we get the outlines that Carolyn spoke about, we'll get this out to everybody so they can start looking at it, probably their committee's info.
So in thinking about that list, which we used to be forty some, which is skimmed down a bit from the things that you continued or aren't necessarily ones that you're ready to have a pursuit presently. With umbrella coordination concept is something that we need considering. And I think it would be valuable if you have an inclusion in your monthly report. It doesn't need to be a formal presentation, but just having a monthly update, almost like written word form, so that everybody can see on the page. With those multiple committees all sort of having some layers. We got that, something that also essentially could be color coded as this. The staff work session with six to eight with a first shot at really looking again at the umbrella component that is not saying that within 2022 there would be just six or eight staff sessions. It's really as the coordination type of work session to get at all of the top thirty to be free for you to do. From a planning commission and a committee review meeting, we believe that there need to be at least six of those types of things. And depending upon the committee's interest, if it is Park Recreation side, they may have their own set of up to six. So that would be in this quarter actually our strategies. Now workshops, where the difference being, looking to take the gloves off and consider all the options, kinds of discussions, right? What are the in and outs of potentially different approaches? There's one three is more along the lines of the formal actions or the regular kinds of meetings that you have. So these workshops would be, I think, in addition to a fifth one, we need to think right from the beginning, how much time, because you were identifying your other work base about how much time, right, there is for staff and the volunteers that you have. There would want to be at least two public open houses associated with the stuff that more specifically limited to recreation and, oh, pity. One for recreation and one to for the other broader planning types of efforts in terms of open houses, that's something here, there need to be one so that they can see in response to this. It don't have to be formal public meetings, those are the open houses. But public meeting, there have to be at least one. There's probably going to be, there would be one, but there would be at least one. Your residential briefing, there would be four packages. This is in addition to the monthly progress, which means here is a set of actions that are proposed associated with these different efforts. So that will be along those complex package related to each area of the plan. And then, so in how we trace them. And then, of course, public hearings, depending upon the specific course of action, whether it's provision or whether it's a comprehensive plan policy itself. So it's something to add in. But in addition to the sequencing of things and the readings of it with the group, given the space, there is even less of it. We can sort of look at what your global concept, both keeping it all together and highlighting it. Thank you very much for that additional time.
President, I do have a comment.
You know, just what you recommended, our next steps would be from here in terms of timing and where do you think we should go?
So in the coming, March, April, and May, for that quarter two sequence package, we would be putting together these outlines for you to first, you know, with the potential ways in which criteria could be outlined. It's not saying here's a specific ordinance type of approach and what do you think of it? But here are all the kinds of topics. So in April, we would anticipate that this quarter package, this quarter two package would be in front of you so you could see everything and you could give, I think, the different committees for all of their particular sections and understanding the potential for how do you prioritize, we gave the example of is it appropriate for us to consider in 2022? Or is it 2023? Do you need a park direction or what? So all of these kinds of things, and then being able to maybe, um, looking at what you would seek to put at the top of the list, the time or in the way in which with Roger and I discussing the organizing of different committees. So then essentially there are the agenda packets and it doesn't become anything overwhelming. So it'll be in April, we're looking at this quarter two package and outline the beginning. The first principle of that day, we would like to move forward if you think and for each, I'm just suggesting, if there is that be, because that is not necessarily our first priority, then we can do that. We would want to ensure for the efficiency of cost from a, or a advertising standpoint, or just a public hearing standpoint, that when there are policy decisions that are going to be moving forward, that those are done in a logical sequence so that the order, let's just take that as an example, with this update, we're not having one set of changes where there was actually another section affected, but you hadn't addressed that section, meaning this will be a currency, which was another topic. And that we would outline. And this is a specific thread that would be most logical and advantageous for you to fall, to work with.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Okay. Any questions here?
No, I think that that covers it all. I mean, there's, you took what we sent in December and they set it out as tasks and sent back. So as soon as we get these, we can start plugging in where we're going to go with the motion. Carolyn, there's one, two, three, there's three new members of council that weren't privy to the conversations that we had last year during COVID and all that other stuff. So I think maybe sooner or later, we're going to do an update as, you know, I sent them the comprehensive plan, I sent them the action list that I generated that I sent to you, that you created your file from. So if they have any questions, they can talk to me and if there's anything specific, I can get in touch with you.
And I think any of those comments would be helpful in March for what we deliver to you in April, to be able to reflect on what kind of questions you have. That would be more valuable. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Before you step away, so as Madhur says, okay, properly noting, there are three new members of council. What would you recommend for reading material to get those three members of council up to speed on the comprehensive plan and moving forward this year? And maybe limit it to something less than five thousand pages.
Well, now you just, what do you think? The company that's helping you with that. And if there's anything that you may have had as coming in with, I don't know, your lectures, as you're speaking, or how the things that you have put up, that through that you have to put up, that, um, through either the primer component or that, uh, the MTC, uh, just in terms of what to copy, the plan objectives speak to be, and we have those kinds of documents, and actually I can send them over to Roger, um, they are in the, uh, zero percent sexy and fun type of thing to read, when you, um, make sure that you've got, you're reading it after the cup of coffee, not to bedtime, um, or anything like that, because they're actually from very, I think, um, important stages regarding some of these documents, that the mature can state, and I, and probably went to the, the reference to turn a couple of times, where some municipalities can not really die as completely as they can, into what municipalities planning could, uh, permits you of, uh, the community to do, maybe from the book, but the way in which you could ultimately thread it together, just strengthening those things getting back to design standards, actually, it, it's, it's a little interesting. So, we'll highlight a few of those points, the ones we've thrown over, just as a, a laser focus, but not, because, um, members aren't going to really observe those things, children, the animal, but if there are some particular passages that we think would be less advantageous based on the time, we'll, we'll highlight some.
That would be very helpful, I think. Any other comments, questions? No, thank you for that one.
Thank you.
I might draw up those cups of tea. See you.
Thank you.
President, I conclude with my remarks.
Thank you. I'd like to work with Shayty, Councilman Rivers.
All righty, so, uh, I, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to down the list here and then we'll, uh, go to our discussion items. Uh, Chief Meyer, do you have anything to add to your report?
No.
All right, so we'll just, let, have that entered into the record, uh, with the minutes. Um, Chief Knapp, do you have anything to add to your report?
No, I'm just wondering that everybody received it, so that was the new distribution list. So, I believe I got one back from, uh, O'Neil, I don't know, did you receive the report?
Uh, I will just send it. In the Mechanicsburg borough, where did you send, where did that?
Today.
I mean, um, I don't, I haven't seen it, but I haven't, I don't know back, so.
And Chief, I know that my email address was a personal one, not the board's.
I saw that, because that was from the distribution that we sent out earlier.
Did we just check that?
Beginning of the year. Yeah, I'll take, I'll take it.
Thank you so much. So, thank you for your work.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, and then we have, um, E C World, do you have anything to add?
No, I would, if any questions anybody has, I'm not going to add anything.
All righty. Uh, so that brings us to our discussion items this evening. So, the first one being the discussion of pedestrian safety, um, in mainly crosswalk areas. I know that, um, we received, uh, some communication from, uh, Chief as well as, uh, Sergeant Dyer in regards to intersections of notes, um, for some, uh, safety, uh, recommendations for some safety updates at certain, um, crosswalks. I know one thing we spoke about previously was the idea of, um, obviously you can't do it in the middle of winter, but, um, repainting our sidewalk or our crosswalk lines, I think will definitely help, um, show pedestrians where they should, shouldn't be crossing at, um, approved crosswalks. Um, and then in regards to the, um, the other piece of communication sent by Sergeant Dyer about, um, what was it, uh, is this, uh, is this blinking signs for crosswalks and then the, the, um, the mile per hour time, speed signs, um, I, I'm not sure if there's anything additional that we would, uh, that anyone wants to speak about in regards to this piece of presentation.
Um, I asked, asked Chief to put together with us a spreadsheet, going back and looking at five-year totals in terms of pedestrian fatalities, pedestrian severe injury, injuries in bicyclists, uh, same information of motorcyclists, the state of Michigan, and giving us a good picture of, you know, the history of some more severe incidents and what we're looking at, and you can see the results of that. I think it's very informative and I think Chief, for looking back and doing that analysis is definitely helpful for, for Councilor Shee. Um, Chief, do you have anything to add to, to the reports that, that you submitted with the, from Sergeant Dyer?
Um, there is going to be one more item, but that's the one thing that I am not, I don't have any surprises or anything, one that I'm not quite prepared yet to talk about, um, needing a replacement for an item that would probably help us with some, especially the places where the speed is, is, I just have to get him to get ahead of me, officially through with his bus.
Thanks, Chief. Um, so if we have nothing further, you guys kind of narrate, um, on those, um, items and, uh, we'll move on to our next discussion item, which is the discussion, uh, recommendation of the emergency operations plan. That presented by E C World. Um, E C World, do you have any final comments on the plan? I know we've had it in circulation for a couple of weeks, so.
No, I appreciate the edits that have been provided. Uh, certainly if anybody has edits, comments, suggestions, we can make those. Uh, I believe that our plan runs out, that it's no longer valid here in a few weeks. So, it's always good to have one in case there's another disaster, and not that we couldn't approve it quickly, but, uh, without a plan in place, it does put our, uh, ability to get funding from being on Everest. Although I will say there's twenty-five municipalities in Comberon County that do not have an active plan right now.
E C World, are you comfortable with the draft you have and the comments you've received so far, that if we, if the committee recommends moving it to the next council meeting for adoption, would you be comfortable with that?
I would too, Liam. Uh, like I said in my report, I sat through a presentation last week from the county, uh, on emergency operations planning, and I think that what we have in Mechanicsburg is sufficient for the size of the borough, it, it provides enough information without being burdensome, so if something happened to me and somebody had to come in and pick it up, they would be able to figure out what's going on.
Awesome, so, um, then I'm going to say that, uh, the committee would probably be comfortable, um, moving this to our agenda, the next, uh, council meeting.
You agree?
Yes, I agree. I do agree.
Chief, refer anything?
Oh, no, that's it. I have some to give you.
Sure.
I have room for it. Um, so I've been contacted by, uh, a citizen that had a quick observation, advice, I tend to agree with him, whether if Chief Myers could address this briefly. I think I know the answer, and possibly, uh, you're thirsty. If we look at York Street and Green Street, and York Street and Shitson as an example, uh, the light, the light cycle is such that, especially during high traffic times, and I'm sure this is not, it hasn't ever come up before, uh, the car may be left at a turn or often be delayed for a sufficient period of time that only one vehicle passes through the intersection, therefore causing a significant backlog of traffic. I see, uh, engineers nodding. Is there, is there some education that can be done briefly on this? I know there are more, but.
So, the, the thought, a couple of years ago, I can't remember exactly when, three years ago, maybe something like that, we actually got a grant to look at the retiming of the entire system, not just in individual intersections. Um, one thing that, that did not help us out in terms of that retiming was that the pedestrian, uh, lag, they call it, the amount of time that pedestrians have to cross the street. Apparently we, as Americans, have gotten slower, so we need more time to let pedestrians cross. So, um, but the, the point, the outcome of that, we had our conversations back in the day, you know, we're limited by a capacity issue, meaning we don't have lanes, you know, it's not a timing system. If you take, we're up here to pay Paul, we try to optimize the system to create the best benefit for everybody. So, you're going to have those certain specific timings, law of streets, I don't know, that comes up all the time, um, that we can't get the traffic through, you know, quick enough to be able to not completely follow that, everybody else going in a different direction. So, do we have to look at, um, in terms of, you know, the best optimization that can be done, at least with the system that we currently have? You know, there are, no, there are other levels of, you know, there's a timing sequence in the, in the system that just runs, you know, all the time. You know, we're not getting the, you know, the intelligent transportation and things like that, where there's actually, you know, smart systems that are looking at where the traffic is and how it's reacting versus just kind of basing it off of a, a study that's done, you know, in a count and a, and a given day or something like that. So, um, but ultimately, frankly, I don't think in this case, just because we have this capacity issue, you know, we, we, we just don't have enough, enough lane, lane with potentially to push people through, that even intelligent systems are going to help us out tremendously. So, that was the best way we tell you to tell them to do.
So, this is a follow-up question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And thank you for the education. So, if you take York and Meas as an example, having York Street that's north of the South with a green with a, with a left turn arrow and then swapping that, I don't know the technical terms are, that, that would improve?
Well, you, since I've been giving a lot of time, we would be robbing time from another, from another, you know, cycle leg, and so you would end up, you know, probably negatively impacting that particular leg. So, when you do the optimization, they're just trying to kind of balance the best, the best guess. No, to be real, we could, you know what I mean, and we could absolutely change some things around, but it then goes against the concept of the, trying to look at the system as a whole versus an individual turning movement, um, trying to optimize the system and not just that particularly.
And I think those turning movements really are restricted to just the highest, the highest, uh, capacity times in particular directions. Uh, the problems that, I have a Main Street resident and, and business experience is doing just high capacity times, and you're correct, that will let in Main for the other real trouble area. Um, if, if, if the committee had any desire to learn a little bit more about our next step in moving.
Bring our traffic guy, well, not the traffic guy, you know, we have a traffic guy that did that, is the other thing, uh, that hires, we could bring him in and, you know, uh, either do a presentation specifically on the system, or how the timing were generated and things like that, so that would be, or we could provide some kind of written documentation in some form as well.
So, thank you for that. I think I'll just, um, we'll maybe explore that outside of the meeting and, uh, and come back. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, that's it then.
Thank you. Moving on to property and books recreation, Councilman Morgan.
Okay, I don't really have a, uh, report. The record did not meet in January, uh, because they didn't have a forum, they did not have a forum, and, um, the meeting for February is next Tuesday. So, I will, we have a report following the eighth.
January.
March, March, yes. Oh, I'm a month behind. I gotta go. What else? They got a bad, my problem with that time. Um, it's, I don't have anything. Um, Councilman Booker, do you have anything for the shade tree?
Uh, Shade Tree cannot meet this month because they did not have a warm meter.
All right. All right, awesome. And then moving on then to, um, uh, E A C, E A C liaison, Mr. Booker.
Yes, uh, so just two quick, uh, notes, they did a reorganization at the last meeting. Uh, the same chair and, uh, vice chair remained in, in place. Um, and then the other piece that I'm trying to remember is related to, um, hold on, talk about that. Um, the other piece of that is the national playground grant was closed finally. And then report.
All right. And then we have discussion recommendations on the pools agreement. Do you have anything to ask?
I'm going to defer to the solicitor on that. He was, he was reviewing.
Yes, I'm on my plate, and now we have, uh, we need to, to recommend for that agreement. I'll have that next week.
Next week, okay, awesome. Um, uh, the South Mountain Charlie Way, we have a guest, Mr. Ben Miskel.
Yep. Good luck here. Thank you. Good evening, I'm Sean Mitchell, with Chris Crassman, a land state architect, we should have launched it here, and, uh, said the purpose of working on the South Mountain Charlie project. Um, recently known as Dave Meyer, he's, uh, represented with Friends Group of South Mountain Charlie, which is, which when we came, the shot committee of the, from the Lake County rail, or the County Rail Trail Council, um, from the, uh, excuse me. Um, so just a quick rehash of what we, the last one, we're, we're here for an update in October. Um, this project's been around from twenty nineteen, from twenty nineteen, the goal of the South Mountain Charlie project is to create a seven-mile, charity trail between Mechanicsburg and Bill'sburg, crossing five municipalities and two towns. Uh, began in twenty eighteen, it was sponsored by Silver Spring Township, at the time, um, D C N R basically makes funds available to municipalities, so, uh, basically that's where we get the funding to be able to do these kind of things, is through, and that's why we're here, before you guys, to get your approval. Um, and so, the result for that, uh, study in twenty nineteen was that the trail is broken into three segments, for York County segment, Monroe, it's with Monroe Township segment, and then the Tringle Springs segment, which is north of the Turnpike, and specifically related to Mechanicsburg Borough. So, for a variety of reasons, we focused in on that, uh, segment, the Tringle Springs segment north of the Trin, of the Turnpike, uh, which is what we've been doing for, for last April, uh, been working on that. And, um, you can see in the packet, if you're reading it out there, there's, uh, just looking at the, the eleven by seventeen sheet, the color sheet shows that section to one point two five mile section, um, we looked at a variety of alignments, the one that's preferred at this point is shown in green, um, there, and, um, so, they were asked, in October, we came, we were asking for additional funds, uh, specifically zooming into Mechanicsburg, um, area north of Tringle Borough, there's, uh, north of, southern of, right up there, we reasonably believe there was undeeded property that may be available for acquisition, and so we wanted to do a survey, wetland investigation, and appraisal to dig deeper into that property, uh, which is approved, um, and so, uh, the results are actually on the next sheet, there you can see, on the next eleven by seventeen sheet, the black and white one. Uh, that shows the results of the survey, and basically what we did was, we, I mean, we sent notification letters to the adjacent property owners. Uh, the surveyers pulled the deets for those properties, went out and located the pins, and, um, determined that indeed there is undeeded property, it's a little more than it was thought there was, actually it's over four acres of undeeded property, but most of which is running in the borough of Mechanicsburg. Um, and they scraped the center lines, and the last one was out there a couple of weeks ago, the stakes were still there, so if you wanted to go look at it, you should be able to, uh, there's no lie that, that, uh, one of the issues, uh, that Roger and others were concerned about was the pump station at the headworks to the waste bar treatment plant, uh, whether that was in that road or in the way. The survey shows that just the northwestern corner of the fence is actually in the right way, so the majority of the pump station appears to be outside of the right way, which is good news for the borough. Um, we also did a wetland investigation, which is just taking soil samples, uh, looking at the plant communities, in the hydrolic conditions, um, it was determined that there were no wetlands within this right of way area, which is also really good news. And then finally, an appraisal was performed by a local appraiser, New, New Associates, River Hampton Township, and their professional opinion was, this land is relatively unbad, has very little value actually, because most of it's in the flood plain or in the floodway, um, they appraised it at eight thousand dollars an acre, which brought this total four point four acre, uh, value to thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, we also prepared a contractual claim, the first two sheets, for the whole Tringle Springs section, the first two sheets are including a packet there, the eleven by seventeen, um, that show Mechanicsburg section in more detail, if you'd like to take a look, because, um, so much the eight and a half by eleven, the second sheet shows our budget, where the funding has come from, and, uh, at the time made clear, to date, uh, Mechanicsburg borough has paid nothing out of pocket for this project, it's all come from, uh, mostly from D C N R. The trick with the D C N R funding is that it's near fifty percent match, so the borough currently has a contract of fifty thousand dollars, they allocated fifty thousand dollars to the borough for this project. To date, we found, um, twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars of match, so our total active budget, which is shown in table two, is forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the table one shows that there's still twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars of D C N R funding available if match could be found for that. Um, so, and then at table two, uh, you can see how the allocation was broken. Um, so, and then at table two, uh, you can see how the allocation was broken down as thirty thousand dollars for, uh, Bucar Horn and our subconsultants for surveying and, um, as well as the appraisal. Um, and then five thousand dollars was allocated for your solicitor, um, to review, to review legal matters. Um, and you can see the amounts remaining there. We're, we're approaching the end of our, which is available at this point. Um, and so, um, that leads, we've kind of done all that work to kind of lead to another decision point. Um, with the acquisition of the rail right of there, you can see in table three there, the claim's value is thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, we can use, uh, the remaining, of course, the remaining DCNR funding to, um, account for fifty percent of that amount, and then we're looking for the match funding to go along with that. We had a conference call last week with, um, Silver Spring Township, the county. DCNR was in that. Roger, you were planning to come and emergency. Uh, Mr. Cassidy was able to be on that call. Um, and basically, the result of that call was that, um, Silver Spring Township and the county were talking about splitting that remaining amount three ways. Uh, Carl Mockimer, who's the chair of the Silver Spring Township, were commissioners, uh, specifically asked us to convey to you, I know that the council's made it clear, they don't want to put any money into this project. He specifically asked us to convey to you, um, that, that Silver Spring Township was owing about six thousand dollars, the county was owing about six thousand dollars, but they were hoping to see something from McCannsburg, you know, it'd make it easier for Silver Spring to sell it, to their board, if McCannsburg put something into it. Um, just because out of four point four acres, four acres would potentially, they're in the borough of McCannsburg, so it's a tough sell for him, I guess, politically, to do that. So, um, basically, that takes us back to the front page, where, uh, we have some requests there, um, that we're asking the borough to consider and take action on at some point. I don't know if tonight would be the night for that, considering late hour, uh, but this is kind of an intro to it, uh, hopefully sometime in the not-too-distant future. Uh, Silver Spring Township was trying to meet before their board in April, so that would be a good timeframe, um, to reach some kind of a conclusion from this board as well. But, um, those requests, they should, just from some of those requests, right? First request is, uh, to authorize borough staff to make a formal offer to acquire property from North Oak Southern. We had preliminary conversation with North Oak Southern. Um, they're open to receiving an offer and considering it, whether they would, um, accept or not, you know, have to go through their processes. Um, so, we're just asking for authorization to make that. And the reason we're coming to McCannsburg borough is because you currently have the DCNR funds available. So, um, you know, without McCannsburg borough, that money would be off the table, basically fifty percent that DCNR would put into the acquisition. Uh, secondly, to consider match funding, like I already talked about, other requests for that. Uh, third one is to authorize the borough solicitor, um, to review, um, this offer and, um, also to deal some subsidiary agreements should have to go along with it. Um, we're assuming that if, if North Oak Southern clearly accept the offer that, um, the property basically be split up among the municipalities or potentially, uh, CDR, TCR would take remaining portions that the municipalities, for whatever reason, weren't interested in accepting. So, that will need to be spelt out in, you know, legally, ideally before we have an agreement with North Oak Southern. Um, and then the fourth thing is to result to accept ownership of the property, you know, if North Oak Southern accepts, the borough would actually take the property, take ownership of it. Uh, and then the fifth thing is to consider maintenance responsibility of the trail. Um, and this would, you know, the trail, trails are usually built, designed and constructed with grant funding, and then in a lot of cases, municipality takes ownership at that point. Um, and they'd be, they'd be able to maintain the surface, the mowing on the edge or, you know, the signage, things like that. I would, I would add, the borough's already kind of maintaining a significant portion of this north of Church, between Church Road and the waste star treatment plant, the borough's already mowing that section of the right of way. So, um, you know, we're open to, you know, taking one or all or none of these things. We just want a response from the borough, basically, on these requests. Um, and then the fifth thing I just wanted to mention, uh, if you look at the plan at the last sheet, there actually is sheet one oh one, that's the third sheet on the eleven by seventeen detail. Um, we've been showing a pedestrian bridge there to cross the railroad. And this is kind of a, a really big deal. Um, so, you know, one of the goals of this project has been to connect to Silver's and Taylor's Park. And, um, looking at the guidelines for North Oak Southern, if you go strictly by the book, they would, they wouldn't approve another accurate crossing. So, we'd either have to go to Mulberry Drive or down to Washington Street to get a crossing, or we'd have to do a pedestrian bridge over. Um, and so, we're not asking for a resolution, that's just for your information. I'm not asking for resolution on that, uh, with this. That would be something that would seem to be looked at in more detail from an engineering perspective. There may be alternatives, you know, do an alternative analysis in a future phase, um, to that. And then also, you know, actually permitting that, maybe a different story with the railroad. So, we're not, just say all that and say, it's gonna be difficult to cross railroad. We need to cross that bridge at something, but, um, you know, that's not what we're asking for right now.
Um, Dave, anything you want to add to that?
Um, I don't want to take too much more time, but, um, I think that was well covered. I was just saying that, you know, that this, this is a piece of the overall greenway. This is not the greenway. Uh, acquiring this property does not mean that the borough or anyone has to build a trail, has to connect a trail, has to build a bridge. This was something that came up, as Ben said, and Dave won part of the feasibility study with Silver Spring, that was identified as unowned property, potentially could be used as a trail, uh, also has maybe other value to both Silver Spring, particularly McCannsburg. Um, and so, that's the conversation that we're at here tonight, just to make you aware that we, you know, we came before the last time to get that funding, to, to do that work, to figure out how much is worth, to make the next steps to approach North Oak Southern, so. And because there are new members here, I have, I always have cards. Um, so, and maybe we got last time, but just passing information on, like, on our website. Any of me? And in, in the last long term, we can hand up on it, okay?
Sure. Uh, I'll leave you on the back table too, but, thank you, that's all I've got. So, uh, so is there any questions you'd like to take those or consider in the hour?
I just want to note, Silver Spring had, in the past, been interested in this, and they've turned, turned away, like, in support of it now?
Uh, I think Silver Spring's always been, I mean, they were once, they had about five hundred feet on this whole seven mile trail, and they were the ones who took the lead on the first stage.
Awesome. Is it Monroe that's the one that we were worried about?
Um, Monroe Township's engineers here.
Supervisor, John. Um, so, the Monroe Township Board supervisor, the last meeting was approached by their recreation board, which this group met with their recreation board. The Monroe Board reaffirmed their original position that they are not in favor of the project. Is there any reading yet? Um, well, a couple things. At that particular meeting, there was also a discussion about the future elimination of the Effley Road Bridge over the Turnpike, as well as a number of residents, and a group that actually own this pretty good document, that are not in favor of, you know, running over their property. Their issues were more about, most of the trail, um, at least in its initial form, was on essentially private property, but it would be, you know, fees, that's the opinion from them versus being a public property right away or something. I think that was the, the base behind the original statement, and I think that statement is our type of media.
The Effley Road Bridge going away?
It was presented in the last meeting for, um, the Turnpike potentially, you know, eliminating.
Yeah. The last time we were in touch with them, they showed us on a four or five year time scale, but they haven't appropriated money for it yet, so, you know, that may or may not happen.
How it works is actually they've taken all of our money to the township to remove it potentially.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, gentlemen. Any other questions from anybody on the conference? Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. That's all I have, then, thank you.
So, just quickly, would the committee want to take this up at the next council meeting and truly have some time to digest and review it and take it out?
Absolutely.
Put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Can I, I'll just, I'm also willing to come to Rec Board, Plan Commissions, uh, you know, whatever. I'm, I talk to anyone and everyone about this, so, um, if you want me to show up, I'll do it.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Oh, sorry, definitely. I'm gonna have to keep a report.
Thanks. Personal. Jenny, please.
Yeah, we can first, uh, the, this, I apologize. I thought, I received an invitation for this meeting, so I thought that we were free to ask questions of the committee as well.
I apologize to that, I was not aware that you received an invitation.
Yeah, so that's why I just wanted, so the only thing I would ask is just that there are pension committee meetings, um, and some planning, there's going to be plans for a little bit about ten years, and just doesn't look quarterly. So, if we do that, we might be able to, we could, uh, do that.
That's absolutely our goal.
Yeah, yeah, so we're not, because we have representatives on, and, and, and we can all kind of talk and discuss.
We should really spoken about that, we'll make that happen.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, appreciate it, thank you, thank you.
Any other citizens comment? Other persons?
Uh, I have three items here, real quick. Uh, we got notified this week that UCI is going to be doing a major enhanced pipeline project up Allendale Road. Uh, they're gonna be coming up Eric Drive in the township, uh, Cofflin Street to Allendale, then Allendale all the way to Simpson Street, uh, right before they get to the dentist office there, um, just beyond Apple Drive, they're gonna cross Allendale and go up along beside the bank to Simpson Street. Uh, I spoke to them on the phone about this project. They are going to install ADA ramps on all the, because it's under the sidewalks, they're doing open cut under the sidewalk. They will install all the ADA ramps the whole way up through. Uh, that's sixteen, sixteen ADA ramps for residents, I want to be careful when we pave that street.
Are we gonna let them know that they're not paying for it? Because it's really expensive.
Uh, it's, we're...
We can send them a post.
What's gonna happen is their, their entire sidewalk will be tore out. So, this is, this is a major process in the ADA pipeline.
They're only paying for the ADA, they have to pay for that stuff.
They will pay to restore the sidewalk.
We can still tell them how much it costs.
Uh, we will do that. Uh, we're looking on the permit for that right now. Um, the, I want to talk to the personnel committee and that about, because of the amount of information that Carolyn brought tonight to adjust, uh, the comp, the, uh, the goals for the firm manager as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned. That was a Q one item. Uh, Wayne will make Q one on that one. And I mentioned it a while ago, the sinkhole of railroad tracks by Fisher's Auto Park behind Foster's Automotive. Uh, CH notified me Friday afternoon of a massive sinkhole, and it was huge. It is the main vault that goes between, uh, Arch Street, goes down Arch Street, across the old Arch Street right way, down through into, uh, into, uh, the sinkhole, and then proceeds down to the north side basin that drains all that water down through there. Uh, Greg and I are brainstorming how we're gonna fix that. North Oak Southern came, came through, they filled it with ballast and said, "We've got trains that have to go through." So, um, they're keeping an eye on it if it sinks anymore. Uh, it's in there right of way, so this is one of those, we're gonna have to jump through all kinds of friggin' hoops to get this taken care of and try to figure out the best way to do this. So, um, that's not gonna be a cheap fix.
It's gonna be a two-part process. We're gonna have to stick something in there right now just to be able to get by while we get the, the potential end solution figured out, you know, probably we even discuss them with the authority as well of, uh, making sure what we put in there. If we're gonna do it now, we do want to put something in there of a size that makes sense, um, versus what's there.
And I, that thing's, I don't know, a hundred fifty years old, you know, I mean, middle, it, it did pretty well.
It's two foot wide.
Okay. What'd you say, Gary?
It's me, actually, I thought four foot. The orange way, four foot.
It's about four foot high and it's about, uh, it was...
Two foot wide.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's five, six feet wide.
It's about four foot.
They hit it when they put that monstrous ADA ramp in at Fisher's Auto Parts there, when Fisher moved into that, into the warehouse there across from Snappers. Uh, they hit the top of it when they put that ADA ramp in, but we, they patched it and fixed it, and then the thing worked fine. But, um, yeah, even Friday, there was no, no, no rain, no nothing. We don't know why, it, it just suddenly gave way and vibrations from the train finally affected the bricks.
Just for point of clarification, the, the comprehensive plan on the goal sheet is Q four.
Are you kidding me?
So, you're done?
You're done.
You're good in that.
We might have to adjust that cup to Q four. You saw what it just ran.
We can't, Johnny, after all we've...
We go to work with it.
That's all I have, oops, I'm sorry.
You're done?
Yes, I am done.
Me, nothing, thank you.
I just want to say that, uh, Thursday is opening night for the high school musical they're doing, Joseph and Mary can't afford drink out. So, get your tickets and go, uh, support our high school kids.
Um, it's social work month, and Brittle Marsh is selling chocolate covered Oreos. And I happen to know there's some good social workers in the room. Um, but in all seriousness, please thank the social worker. Since the last two years, um, the social worker coast's been pretty tough. So, if you know one, get some Oreos. No problem.
David, thank you. Just a quick one, sorry. This might, this, perhaps you'll come and go over it, but I'll just voice it very quickly. Apparently, the borough council had made a change to, uh, in order that some points have happened. I'm hoping we can revisit this at a future meeting. How do you do with the dog ordinance? Um, the borough council has, uh...
Well, it's a meeting.
What's that? Oh. Uh, basically, it's gonna be a five million, two hundred and fifty dollars for a fence. By the time you add the court costs, et cetera, you're looking at maybe three hundred and fifty, four hundred dollars for a first offense for a dog owner's. Seems a little bit steep. Um, there's, apparently, there's a, that reads that way, so someone was not like dogs, but, um, maybe that's something to look out at him and, and bring down two fifty down a bit. I mean, you were saying by, uh, five, the court costs over a hundred dollars to, to a, uh, to a resident.
If I'm, if there's first defense for a dog owner's, in a warning letter from us, with a copy of the ordinance, and so, really, eh, the second time you doggone through this subject so far.
Now, we're tapped to that. I may have had the honor.
Did we make it one of his ten to do fifty?
I had them.
Anyway.
I'll look at it in the future.
Yeah, just maybe put it on radar. Thank you.